Okay, it's 12 o'clock. I'd like to invite everyone to stand for the pledge of the flag, please. A pledge allegiance to the flag, United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands. One nation, indivisible, and for the justice for all. Thank you.
Well done. Well done, Louis.
Nice touch.
Always carry a flag in case of emergencies.
I'm like home without it.
Okay, do we have a, we do have a quorum. I see that we have all four council people on board and myself, for a total of five. Do we have a motion to approve the minutes of May 27?
So a move, Commissioner Givens.
Second, Commissioner Massimiano.
We have a motion in a second. Do we have any discussion on the minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Financial report and payment of the bills. Do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
So move, Earl Piner.
I'll second.
Very good. Any discussion?
No.
Steve, do you see that, I'm certainly believing that our expenditures are probably less during this COVID right now, or is it about the same?
No, I think we're doing really good, and the first budget amendment I present will even further be good news for the general fund budget. You're right, we have not been spending as much, and the price of gas is down for a number of reasons, we're not spending as much.
Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay, Steve, you were on for a budget amendment.
Mayor, I apologize, Steve, I apologize for interrupting. Can you also remember you had a second meeting, May 29? Can you approve the minutes of that meeting?
Very good, thank you. We did have a second meeting on May 29. Can we have a motion to approve the minutes of May 29's meeting?
So move, Commissioner Givens.
Second, Commissioner Massimiano.
Any discussion on those minutes? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
You're welcome.
Mr. Repo, you're on with the budget amendment.
Okay, I have three budget amendments. The first one is number 2020-09. It looks very detailed, but what it does is to reflect our budget, it needs to, it is reflecting resolutions R152019, which was passed by the board on November 20. That was to borrow $656,000 from PNC Bank for the purpose of equipment purchase late last year and the current fiscal year. And also, the resolution number R42020, which was passed on May 13, to borrow additional money from the sewer fund, I'm sorry, to spec, to lay out the terms of the loan from the sewer fund to the general fund for the purpose of the construction of the neighborhood community center. So that whole budget amendment is to recognize the additional revenue from the borrowing, and to recognize the decreased expenditures of the debt service, because the terms of that loan from the sewer fund is to not be repaid until fiscal year 2022. So the whole bottom line of that budget amendment number 2020-09 is a favorable $786,000, $786,763 of combined increased revenue and decreased expenditures and debt service.
Do we have a motion to approve budget amendment 2020-09?
I'll second.
Second, Commissioner Givens.
Any discussion on budget amendment 2020-09? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, budget amendment number 2020-10 is to recognize the resolution R32020 that was passed on May, that was reassigning the five, I'm sorry, uncommitting the fund balance for the neighborhood community center project of $500,000, and then placing that into the unassigned fund balance. And that created a greater need for loan from the sewer funds. That undoes what was committed out of the fund balance account.
We have a motion to accept budget amendment 2020-10.
So move, Earl Piner.
Second, Commissioner Massimiano.
Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, the final budget amendment I have is number 2020-11, and we had budget in the current, we had budget in the current year, $400,000, that we anticipated not having spent from the $800,000 community development block grant that we received last fiscal year. Well, the actual number is 252,985 dollars less. So we just shifted that loan, the recognition, the fiscal year recognition of that CDBD loan from FY19 to FY20.
Very good. Do we have a motion to accept that budget amendment 2020-11?
Commissioner Givens, so move. Second, Earl Piner. I'm sorry.
Very good. Any discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you, Steve.
You're welcome.
Okay, I think we have a bid opening. Is that something that you're doing, Michelle, you and Dan?
We can, yes.
Are you doing that? I think it's
Dan should have it.
Bring to the record in a minute.
Ready?
Yes, thank you.
There we go, okay. Yes, for the town of Elton, Route 279, water crossing project number 202001, favorite results, we had four bidders actually bid the project. I will read the results right now, okay? First bidder was Adell Construction Company, located in Newark, Delaware. Adell's bid was $100,000. One, and it's 1,000,000, so you got it, so $100,000, okay. Second bidder was ECM Corporation, located in Fort Washington, Maryland. Their bid was $160,000, I'm sorry, $160,010. So 1, 6, 0, 1, 0. Third bidder was Hankels &amp; McCoy out of Blue Bell, Pennsylvania. Their bid was $87,150. That's 8, 7, 1, 5, 0. And the fourth bidder was Rival Construction LLC, located in, I think Lutherville. Their bid was 105,600, 1, 0, 5, 6, 0, 0. So right now, the apparent little bidder appears to be Hankels &amp; McCoy. Hankels &amp; McCoy, $87,150. We recommend a contingent award to Hankels &amp; McCoy upon the engineering review for $87,150.
We have a motion to accept Hankels &amp; McCoy for $87,150,000 contingent upon engineering review.
Still move, Commissioner Massimiano.
We had a motion in a second. Any discussion on these? It seems like we were four bids and really fairly close within, would bid a little bit high, but let's see what, how it comes out.
I was going to ask Earl Piner, ask question why was that so low? I mean, I was just wondering if they, everybody overbid or had too much?
No, sir. The engineer's estimate for this project is 90,550. That's our engineer's estimate.
It's close than what he did. I was just wondering the difference. Okay, we're good.
Very good. Any other discussion?
Could I, could I comment here?
Yes.
I, I think Dan might want to explain to the board why we're doing this project. We're building a new, another water line, a second water line across 279 in the, in the Bell Hill area. He may want to explain why we're doing it, to spend that kind of money.
Exactly right. The purpose of this project is we're adding a redundant, a redundancy system for another water line that goes across 279 around the Bell Hill area. We had a situation back in 2018 where a water line broke. Fortunately, we were able to get to it, but if it would have happened further up, we wouldn't have gotten to it. As a result, there was a number of customers out of water that particular day. It was a New Year's Day. That's one thing I'll never forget. So in order to prevent this from happening again, we're adding another line, the parallel line, which is located almost, almost in the same spot as the other one. So, and we, the town itself will be installing the valves, you know, through another subcontractor. The subcontractor, then the subcontractor actually would be drilling underneath them, Route 279, and we'd be just tying the line. So basically, you have two sources of water going across from the Bell Hill Tower to the whole Bell Hill area, including the Plank Jay, including the Golden Corral, and all the houses back that way. So it's a redundancy system we're installing.
That's great.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, I think it's extremely important to have that line. I was out there with you during that morning, and we had a lot of people without service, and I think that this will make sure that we, we can make it where, if there was a broken line, we'd have the other line available to them. Very good. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, Lou, you were on.
Okay, the next item we have is Resolution R52020, which has been amended. The board has already passed the resolution initially, the unamended version, and it expires late June, I think June 27. I don't have it in front of me. But I believe that the board had considered, or wants to consider whether extending that. Essentially, what this does is allow alcohol waiver to the Elk Alliance and other people participating, and to have it outside. One of the things I changed on this, I reflected a new order by the governor, which was effective June 10, that allows some indoor food service, service now. So you can be inside, I think it's 50% capacity, but still, from the last time that's changed to allow that. But I believe the board still wants to have the waiver to these organizations so they can maximize their profitability, so to speak, by having both indoor and outdoor. And also, you want to, you probably need to extend it, but I'm not sure how far you want to extend it. So we left that open for the board's discussion.
Well, you know, I've been down there several times. I think it's a winner for the downtown business district. I think they're really appreciative of what we have put together for them. At this point, I am, I feel 99.9% sure there hasn't been any issues or trouble. But I'd like to take this a month at a time, until we see how everything comes together. So if I could make a recommendation, I would almost like to take it, we would meet again, I think we meet again on, at the end of July, July, let's see, 15th, first and the 15th. But could we take this to, let's say, mid-August? Can we try like August 12, and then we'll meet on August 5 to renew it if needed?
Yeah, Rob, that's something I planned on talking about if we weren't going to talk about it today, because, you know, I'm down there all the time, and I think it's a great thing. I would love this to become a part of our permanent downtown environment. You know, it's just like what Northeast has going on, that life out on the street, it just makes the town seem more alive, and it, it increases the capacity of the restaurants on top of it. I haven't seen no trouble or heard of any trouble up there. Just seems like a good time.
Very good. I, I feel the same way.
Good idea.
So is everyone okay to push it, push it down through, let's say, August the 12th at this point, and then we'll still look at continuing with it if there's no issues?
Right, agreed.
Do we have a motion to extend it to August 12?
No, so move.
Is that our first meeting, our next first meeting in August?
Our first meeting in August would be August 5.
Yes.
And we would
Oh, okay. So we'll get it before that, okay.
Yeah, we would be able to renew it again on August the 5.
Okay.
So we had a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Any other discussion on this? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you.
Okay, Michelle, we'll just amend the ordinance and put the August 12 date in it.
Perfect.
Okay, next item I had was the proclamation, if you want me to read it at this time?
Yes, sir.
"A proclamation of the mayor and commissioner of the town of Elton proclaiming Juneteenth in the town of Elton. Whereas on January 1, 1863, the Emancipation Proclamation declared that all slaves shall be then, thenceforth, and forever free. And whereas it was not until June 19, 1865, when the last vestiges of slavery were, slavery were moved by General Gordon Granger, who read federal orders in the remote area of Galveston, Texas, declaring that all enslaved people in Texas were free. And whereas celebrations of June 19 that began in community churches in the South have grown to include 47 over 57, 50 states. And while, and whereas where our country has come far from the oppressive days of slavery, we must continually recommit ourselves to recognize that we are all children of God and equal in His eyes. Now therefore, on behalf of the mayor and commissioners, the citizens of Elton, under the authority vested in me as the mayor of the town of Elton, hereby declare the 19th of June, every June, Juneteenth, in the town of Elton, encourage all our citizens to recognize the price paid by those who spent their lives in slavery, and to raise our collective voices against injustice." That completes that proclamation.
Thank you, Lou. Do we have a motion to accept the proclamation for Juneteenth?
So move, Commissioner Givens.
Second.
We have a motion, motion in a second. Do we hear any discussion on this?
Yeah, I really think that was thoroughly written, and I know there were some officials wanting that, and, you know, they are very appreciative of that, and I, and I believe next year you can improve upon that other than a proclamation. I know Elton High School principal said that he would like to be involved with the town of Elton in some type of celebration or partnership.
I appreciate that, Charlie, and I have to tell you, I think at the, I believe that at the national level, I truly believe that this will be declared a national holiday with everything that they're working through. Now, the celebration on this has always seemed to be the third Sunday, I think, of each month in June. But we would follow suit with whatever I feel that our federal government would do. But I want to be part of this. I want to be on that committee, and I want to be able to say that I helped put together, you know, our Freedom Day in, in the town of Elton. I think it's something that we should celebrate. It's very, very important.
And certainly, it is in your hands.
Thank you. Any other discussion? Hearing none, all in favor?
Aye.
Motion unanimous. Thank you. Anything else you have there, Lou?
That's all I have, Your Honor.
All right, very good. Let's see, I had, I wanted to mention that we did have a meeting yesterday. I think there was about 80 leaders throughout the county on the, on the Zoom meeting. I know that Commissioner Givens was also on that meeting, and I think we touched base on some focused issues in our county. And I think that we're, part of me, I believe that we were somewhat ahead of the curve in the rest of the country, but I can tell you this, we have room for improvement, and we're going to continue to improve as a community, and we're going to get better from all of this. And I'm committed to that. So it was a very good meeting, and I appreciate everyone inviting me to be part of that yesterday. With that, I have nothing else to report. I think I sent everyone an email about the enterprise zone to take a look at. I think that Gene Minner has sent the information over to Sandy Edwards at Cecil, at the Economic Development, to take a look at that. And I think Gene Frumel had a question, and I think we're getting those answered also. But with that, I have nothing else to report. Gene, do you have anything today?
No, everything is so quiet, but that's a good thing, isn't it? Dan, the only, the only thing I have is, is a question about, it's like an Eastman or alleyway that runs along Brown Street.
Okay.
Yeah, I don't know if it's a problem or not. I'm hearing that there's an area between Hunter and Miller that the residents would normally take care of that, those, you know, that grass and all, are unable to do because it's either wet or depressed or something. And I, I don't know. I certainly, I haven't gone back there.
I am familiar with it, yes.
Oh, you are? Okay, that's all that matters. Thank you.
No problem.
Commissioner Rob, do you have anything today?
Like Gene said, it's been kind of quiet. We're back into our second week at work. I was there when the protesters marched by. It was all very peaceful and quiet. It was well done.
Very good. Commissioner Charlie?
Don't have much to say other than the fact that maybe to recognize the chief and Elton Police Department, as many of you know, there have been protests in Elton a couple weeks ago on Route 40, the other day, basically at Cecil College. Then they marched from town. I'd like to thank the chief and his men for being in the front of everything, because Elton has been quiet and is still quiet. And you can only appreciate that because, you know, when a lot of this started out, everybody had comments, and, you know, you heard it when you see our police department attacked in subtle ways, but they've done a great job, and they ought to be appreciated. And, you know, I'll do whatever I can to support them in that effort. And I know everybody else will as well. That's it.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Commissioner Ryan?
I have not too much to say today, but I just wanted to say thank you to the police department. Like I said, I don't have much to say. Staying low but quiet, but involved. That's the best way to say it.
Yeah, good way.
You know, I did have one more thing, Lou, and maybe you could take a look at, or ask Mary McGaw about it. I did sneak over to the community center, I guess it was on Friday, and it absolutely looks wonderful. It's a shame that we're in this COVID stage right now because we're getting so close for that building, and, and I, I think our community is going to be extremely proud of that facility. And we put a lot, I know that staff has put a lot of hard work in bringing that thing together. They were sealing the concrete floor, and I think they're going, they were preparing to put the flooring down. But the one comment that I'd like to make, I know that we have a center court for volleyball, which there's holes core drilled out for the volleyball poles at center court. I strongly believe that we need to have, the short courts also need to be able to put a volleyball court. So the center court is great for the feature game, but if you have volleyball legs, you need to be running two games at the same time. So there needs to be, in my opinion, two more courts, so there'd have to be four more holes core drilled into the court, so that you could have the, the other volleyball courts. Did I explain that correctly, or did I?
No, I know what you're talking about. I, I had, they never discussed that when this project was bid. And I don't know how complicated it would be to do that. And the reason I say that, because you'd have to have the volleyball equipment, you know, ordered and everything, and we, we don't have any of that. I don't know if we could do it after the construction, or we want to get another change order, another change order or something like that. That would be probably a couple thousand dollars.
Yeah, it could, it's definitely
To drill a couple holes, let me tell you.
Yeah, it's four holes that they have to drill, but I, I feel pretty sure that we, we're going to need them if we want to have any type of leg play. One of the issues we
Rob, I agree with you.
I think you need to look in, I think you need to look at, Rob, before you put four more holes. The direction you're going, you can get those standard bases that will hold them up, because you don't want on your court to have all of those holes, because at the time, with those sleeves in the floor, they become problematic. With the two, you don't have a problem. Now, what you're talking, you could set those up, if you have the standards, in a minute's time. The center court deserves the sleeves in there because it becomes more rigid. But, you know, you can do what you want to do, but I would look at that first.
I, I am okay with your thinking. If, you know, I never even thought about those holes with the, with the covers on them interfering with the courts. I kind of thought that they were smooth, but you guys are the experts. You tell me.
Givens, Givens is right. It's like the portable basketball courts. They just roll them on and roll them off on the side. So
Yeah, I think that'd, that'd be the best way to go. Then we just buy the equipment. Wouldn't have anything to do with the price of the project. We can buy it anytime.
You guys answered it.
Got it.
No need, no need to do anything. When we buy the equipment, we'll get the ones that are, and they'll buy themselves, and that'll work. Perfect.
One of the things I want to mention is the, the contractor's been there twice so far to look at the floor for the basket, you know, for the markings, and they're not able to do it right now because the moisture in the concrete is too great in order to do the installation. So they're coming back in a week or so to say again, but we're having some issues with that, and we don't know why, or whether there's an option for, for marking the floor, because it's a concrete floor, and it's, for some reason, it's retaining a lot of moisture.
I tell you, it looks fantastic. It, it is wonderful in there, and it is, it's amazing. Quite frankly, it's amazing where we're at with that building.
It's beautiful inside, it really is.
Yeah, I haven't seen the inside. I'd like to, though.
We're not going to allow you to go in yet.
Yeah, that's what I figured.
Okay, we have a caller on the line. Do you have any questions or comments for the good of the town of Elton?
This is Dick Lemon, 103 Walnut Lane.
Hello, Dick Lemon.
How you doing?
Hello, Zach.
Nice to hear everybody's voice. I want to support what Commissioner Givens said about the police department, and I had a couple questions. We were going, you, Mayor, you gave directions a few months ago to hire two more policemen, but I'm under the impression that we're not doing that. Is that correct?
I, I would say to you that we've got several police officers that are in the drop, and we're going to be in need of police officers here shortly. But the two that's in the budget, I think we're going to just wait until we get through this COVID, and see where we are financially, and move from there. But there could be
As you well know better than I do, it's probably will take almost a year to get a new policeman anyway, going through the school and the approvals and the different things that have to happen.
That is correct.
So my recommendation is that we get started. That's not what I heard you just say, but that would be my recommendation.
Thank you.
Is our current count holding up okay? We haven't had people quit or anything like that?
No, I think our police department is pretty strong. I think that they are all sticking together, and I, I believe that we're, we're pretty strong. And I guess that's the best way to put it.
Okay. I wanted to ask a question about yard waste. It looks to me like we're picking up every other week. Is that, am I wrong on that?
At one time you were, now my crews just got back together this week because of the COVID. Now we're back together, and we're transitioning back up. It should be weekly now, so.
So it should be weekly now?
Yeah.
Okay. I thought maybe it was a cost-cutting move.
No.
But you're saying it's because of the virus?
Yes, exactly. My crews were cut in half temporarily, so.
Okay.
We were, we were alternating crews, Mr. Lemon. We had one crew on, one crew off, crew off, and then now we're all back full full strength. Is that correct, Dan?
Dan's all here.
Perfect.
Because I've noticed like on North Street, you guys are very good at cleaning up almost every day to just, because it's a main thoroughfare. That hasn't been done. And, you know, at church, they ride by there every day and sometimes that stuff's been sitting there for, for a while. But anyway, you, you've answered the question, so I'm good. And I'm glad, I'm glad, I'm assuming that everybody is safe. Or okay, well. When we had our last meeting, Mayor, you asked Gene Minner to try to give us an update each meeting on the Route 213 state road situation as to improvements, enhancements.
And, and I can tell you that we have not received any, I have not received anything from her, but I'm sure it's because we haven't received anything yet. But I will follow, I will follow up with her with an email and find out with her.
I say my, I think, I think that's something that has a sense of, should have a sense of urgency attached to it. And now I heard, is, is the next meeting actually July 1st? Or is it the 15th? When, when's the next meeting?
Michelle, when's our next meeting? July 1st?
15th. Just one meeting in July. That's correct.
July 15th will be our next meeting, Mr. Lemon.
Okay. That's fine. You know, one thing I found out with these call-ins, I can hear Steve and Louis better on the call-in than I can when I'm in the actual meeting. So in a sense, the, the call-in is, is positive from that standpoint. Anyway, that's all I have. Good luck to all of you and stay safe.
Thank you. Okay, if there's not any, Mr. Downs, John Downs?
Thank you. I, I don't know if you're aware, but recently Judge Baines pointed me to be the defense attorney for the Drug Court program. And I've been doing that. And it, it's a, it's not a great time obligation, but it, it's usually on Fridays in court a little bit in the morning, a little bit in the afternoon. And it's interesting, interesting, but not in a good way, how this COVID situation has impacted people who are in recovery. And a lot of those people have, have sort of relapsed. And, and it's part of the opiate epidemic in, in the country. It's not unique to here. It's everywhere. But it was, it was, it was really an insight to, for me that I didn't have and how, how dependent these people are on the opium products, but also dependent on programs like the Drug Court for their recovery. A lot of them have, have relapsed. We've gotten back recently. We're now doing things actively in court face to face. Having the most at-risk people coming in, in face, face-to-face participation. And, and I really raised this issue because yesterday had the opportunity to attend a graduation for, for ladies. It turned out to be women all this time, but four of them who graduated yesterday and completed the Drug Court program. It took one of them five years to complete that, but
Wow.
successfully completed it. They had their families there and they talked about what that meant to them.
Right.
And we're going to have another graduation ceremony in November. And they'll have, it'll be a little different than I think. We'll have a little food and drink and that sort of stuff. It only took about a half hour yesterday. I'm going to invite you guys, any of you that can, that can make it to stop by because if you ever have any doubt about the value of that program, going to a graduation ceremony will erase that doubt. It is, it's not 100% successful, but I can guarantee you those four people would be dead without that Drug Court program.
Right, fantastic.
The one described how she got her own place, got a job, bought her first car. She said that she was a 30-year user.
Wow.
And you would never believe it. She's healthy, functional, just doing things, you know, and, and it was a forum, not, not just her. I mean, it was success stories. And it really, for somebody that was a skeptic for the Drug Court program, it's really made a believer out of me. And if you've never had any experience close in your family to see it and the impact that it has, to go to that, one of those ceremonies, it'll give you a different perspective on things. So I'll bring it up in November. I'll give you guys an invitation. Maybe some of you can come if it's, if it works in your day.
Very good. Thank you, John.
Thank you, thank you, sir.
I'm happy to be here.
Okay, we had a caller just came on. Is there anything that you need to state to the Town of Elton? Okay, hearing none. This meeting is adjourned.